I'm going to call the meeting to order. Pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting will be conducted in person and as a courtesy via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if there are technological problems unless required by law. The locally local scene, formerly PAC TV, will record this meeting. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the chair immediately. Anyone recording? No, great. Okay, let's do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so for everyone who reviewed the agenda, you'll notice this is a bit different than our normal meetings, so I'm just going to read this piece about the budget hearing. Pursuant to MGL Chapter 71, Section 38N, the school committee will hold a public hearing on the topic of the budget for the school year 2025-2026. And then we're going to proceed with the meeting as usual. So that leaves public comment. Would anyone? Okay, spectators, that's good. Okay, next up. Oh, okay.
I was shocked.
Jay Sisk, Levin Valley Street, Duxbury. Tonight, I call on all of you, the members of the school committee, to recommend the real needs budget in its entirety. After the last school committee meeting on November 20th and the finance committee meeting the following evening, I have sent significant momentum for this recommendation, and I want to urge you to capitalize on that momentum. At these two meetings, in one way or another, each part of the real needs budget was discussed and was advocated for. The takeaway is clear: however we want to parse the budget or look at one part against another, the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. And that's simply because it's not an inflated list of wants, but an honest assessment of real needs that will result in significant educational returns in relations to dollars spent. I'm not going to speak back to you everything that we discussed at the last meeting, and folks have been following in different conversations, but I think it's worth saying that members of both committees, this committee and the finance committee, have argued the need to fortify our academic infrastructure while eliminating as few positions as possible, the need to provide universal full-day kindergarten to maintain its essential place in preparing our young children for the rigors of the first grade curriculum and beyond for our standards, that the town in that case has already in a way signaled its support of universal full-day kindergarten, and to enter a pattern where we go from year to year, trying to say one year it will be provided and another year it won't is confusing and also misguided, that supporting the market-level salary adjustments for our faculty and staff on par with comparable districts will help us attract and retain our outstanding faculty and staff, and maintaining our physical infrastructure so that our students have safe buildings in which to learn and facilities in which to play is also important. So there's been robust discussion, but to my impression, there's been no concrete obstacle set in your path to making this recommendation. To the contrary, every item provided by the superintendent has been recognized for what it is: a real need. So passing this budget will ultimately require a longer and more complex process. I know that, I think we all know that, but that process can't start until you make that recommendation tonight. So I call on you to do that, to recommend the real needs budget in its entirety, and I do so guided by this conviction, and I think this is important for me to say and for everybody to hear. At this moment, December 4, 2024, we in this town have in our hands an extraordinarily high-performing school system. We have dedicated faculty and staff who live up to very high standards and expectations and deliver day in and day out. We have resources and supports for our students. We have facilities and spaces in which they can play and learn. It is ours. Our children benefit. Our faculty and staff benefit from it. Our families benefit. Our town benefits from it. There may be other districts out there who are having other conversations tonight or in the weeks to come, working out plans and strategizing ways to get where we are. We have this in our hands. We have seen already the returns on our investments, and those returns have names and faces. They have needs and aspirations. We have educational excellence in our grasp now if we can keep it. I want to keep it. I know many in this room want to keep it. Many watching at home want to keep it, and we'll have work ahead, no doubt. But we can't do this work without your recommendation, so please, let's recommend the real needs budget and let's get to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? We can move on to the consent agenda, but first I want to ask if there's anything that anyone would like to pull off of the consent agenda as it's listed for discussion? Is everybody comfortable with what's there? Okay, great. So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda inclusive of the approval of meeting I'll deal with that later. Okay. A motion to approve the consent agenda inclusive of meeting minutes from 11:15, '24 and 11:20, '24. A request to approve accounts payable warrants for FY '25, warrant 21. Request to approve in-kind donation for Polly's Pond renovation, the facility surplus, FY '25 SOY. Why am I not remembering what SOY is? Start of year. Thank you. And Q1 budget transfers, and the request to approve the administrative assistant retirement MOA.
So move second.
Okay, great. Any objections? Okay, reports.
Final update is that I just wanted to mention that the reason we had scheduled that school committee meeting for December 13 is because we had a couple of search requests that came in this weekend. It was too late to try to get it into your package, and so thank you for any of that that indicated you're available on December 13 for a quick zoom.
Did you, were you hearing that? We have to leave.
Oh, you know what? They're faulty because mine's going green light and on.
Is it, is it turned on?
Yeah, it turns green.
I can see the light turning on.
Hello, hello.
Mine isn't green though.
And it's working.
Hello, is this one on?
It's working.
Okay.
The green light actually is not the answer.
I'm just going to hold it. Is it still on?
Yes, it is.
Is mine working? If it's not.
We'll just pass one mic around. This works too, so Kelly, you can share.
Does that add extra?
We did test all these mics and they were all working beautifully before the meeting started.
My update was just that we have scheduled a quick Zoom school committee meeting for December 13 at 8:30 where there are three trips for the high school that have been added to the December 13 folder for your consideration. There's a DECA trip, a school council trip, and cheerleading cheerleading trip to nationals. So those are available if you would like to review those, and that's all from me.
Good evening. Tomorrow is an early release day for our
Tomorrow is an early release day for teachers for professional development. Our teachers will be reflecting and sharing practices they've implemented as a result of our November fifth PD Day, and then we'll focus on more content-specific learning. Our next full-day PD Day is January seventeenth, and at that time, we'll focus on collaboration, collaboration with colleagues, collaboration with students, and collaboration with families. I wanted to mention that there is a parent resource for Duxbury Middle School families for the illustrative math program. Mr. Pesejo developed the Duxbury I Am Support Hub that provides lesson summaries, family support materials, and a link to the student workbook. I would encourage any family that is in need of support to review the website, but also then to reach out to us, your teachers, Mr. Pesejo, if you have any questions. And our second-year teacher course will have its final class on Tuesday. As part of the course, Ms. Sheen, Mrs. Lewis, and I have had the opportunity to observe lessons in each of the teachers' classrooms. These observations have highlights that we've seen safe learning spaces that empower students in their learning. Thank you.
I am deferring my update to our budget discussion later.
I wasn't ready for that. Hi, just a couple of quick updates. Yes, half-day tomorrow. Our special ed teams will be focused on building coherence within our IEP process to calibrate across levels through the district. So our elementary teams will work together, and secondary teams will work together. And the IEP rollout's gone really pretty well this year. Some minor kinks, like with any system, but generally, it's gone really quite well. Tomorrow, we also have the APPLE, which is Advancing Parent Professional Leadership in Education, tomorrow evening from six to seven-thirty. So that is our team of CPAC parents and some administrators from special ed, and the focus is on the new IEP and working collaboratively to set an action plan for next year. And then the next CPAC meeting is a support meeting on Monday night at six o'clock, and they're meeting at Chestnut Street Grill.
Sud reps? Sorry.
Good evening. At Chandler School on Saturday, December seventh, the PTA will host the annual Chandler Holiday Festival from nine to twelve. Tickets can be purchased at the door for the fun family event. Chandler School Helping Hands is currently running a code drive. We are collaborating with Anton's Cleaners to collect gently used codes for kids and families. If you're cleaning out your closets, please consider sending in your used codes to all Chandler lobbies now through January fifth. All codes will be professionally cleaned by Anton's in Marshfield and given to families in need. Next week, Alden School will begin our Math Olympiad's after-school enrichment program for about thirty-five students across all grades. The goal of this program is to teach strategies for out-of-the-box problem-solving and foster mathematical creativity. Thank you to our curriculum supervisor, Rita Mary Benoy, our math specialist, Jill Milton, our assistant principal, Jennifer Fiorentino, third-grade teacher Kelly Murray, and fifth-grade teacher Megan Kelly for their support in volunteering for this program. Term one report cards will be hosted this Friday for Alden families. Families are encouraged to check the family newsletter for information to access the Aspen Portal. The PTA is sponsoring the showing of the Wild Robot in the PAC on Friday, twelve thirteen, after school. Thank you to those Alden staff volunteering their time to support this opportunity for students. Our fifth-grade classes are visiting the Commonwealth Museum this week to explore Massachusetts history. Thank you to Abby Armstrong for organizing this field trip for the grade. This phase of our Alden Roof project was completed yesterday. Thank you to our faculty, facility directors, Katie Sinclair, for ongoing communication and collaboration throughout this project.
For Duxbury Middle School, our seventh and eighth-grade chorus and orchestra students held a wonderful performance last night in the PAC. Tomorrow, our sixth graders from chorus, orchestra, and band will perform, and next Tuesday, our seventh and eighth-grade bands will wrap up the DMS Winter Concert Series. Our Respect All People co-curricular is holding their annual food drive to benefit the Plymouth Area Coalition. Students are encouraged to bring a non-perishable food item to their academic support over the next couple of weeks, and the ASP with the most donations will win a prize. Your books are now on sale and will be available until the end of April. Please check out the DMS newsletter for information on how to order your child's personalized copy. And for DHS, this past Monday, December second, was the beginning of winter sports. Last Tuesday evening, our juniors and seniors faced off in our revived power-puff tradition. After a junior junior matchup and a senior-senior matchup, the junior green team and senior black team moved on to the championship. Both teams played hard, and in the end, the seniors were victorious. On the topic of football, the Duxbury Dragons are headed to Gillette Stadium tomorrow, December fifth, where they will again face off Situate in the state championship game. The game is at three, and we are expecting a big turnout, given the early release day for students. We wish them the best of luck. And finally, next Tuesday, December tenth, the seniors have their annual annual credit for life fair, where they will learn valuable life lessons to best prepare them for their future.
Great. Thank you, Chase. Okay. I have a, it's not really an update. It's a clarification of something that was done in the last meeting that has since been brought to my attention, that it, my choice of language was not ideal in the motion that I made, and so I wanted to just clarify for educational purposes, if nothing else. And it does inform actually the way we vote the budget later. So the school committee does not vote line items. We don't vote individual pieces of the budget. We vote a budget by cost center, which you're going to see later, and we've, then those cost centers obviously add up to whatever that bottom-line number is. That bottom-line number then goes to the town, and our voters essentially pass or do not pass the bottom-line number for the budget. Nobody gets to deliberate at town meeting what's included in that budget. So when I made a motion to include, and I use the word include, that was not a great choice of words, because the intention behind that motion was to invite the superintendent to represent the full-day kindergarten costs in the level-funded number and the level-service number, which was how I stated the rest of the motion, but I think the use of the word include suggested that I was inviting a vote on a line-item piece of our budget. So just to clarify, it was confusing. I have a feeling it was confusing for the members. I wanted to clarify that so that there wasn't any misunderstanding about my intention and/or a misrepresentation of the role of the committee when we vote on budget items. So hopefully that clears it up. Does anyone else have any updates? Okay. All right. The budget. So I'm just going to start the budget conversation with a statement that is just a recap of everything that we've experienced over the past six months, but it won't take me a really long time to read that. But at tonight's FY twenty-six budget hearing, you, the Duxbury School Committee, will vote on the FY twenty-six operating budget as well as FY twenty-six capital budget with prioritized capital needs that meet the criteria of a tangible asset or project with an estimated useful life of five years or more and a cost of more than twenty-five thousand dollars or more. So just to remind everyone, it's been a long road, how did we get here, to Wednesday, December fourth. This current FY twenty-six budget process really began immediately after the annual town meeting last March. On April twenty-second, a nine-member Sustainable Budget Task Force was established by the Duxbury Town Manager and tasked with conducting an analysis of the town's current reality and developing options for a five-year sustainable forecast in order to protect the quality of the town-wide service offerings. The options needed to include realistic assumptions, identify recurring and sustainable revenues, and have data to support assumptions and conclusions. The findings of the task force concluded that many city and towns across the Commonwealth have been facing significant budgetary shortfalls. The key factors in Duxbury's budget challenges include the fact that over ninety-seven percent of the town's tax revenue comes from residential property tax, prop-two-and-a-half caps, tax revenue increases at two-and-a-half percent per year over the previous year's tax levy, excluding new growth or other voter-approved increases. Duxbury receives minimal state aid, and all town departments face federal and state unfunded mandates. To continue the challenges, there have been rising beach lease costs and declining beach sticker sales. Average inflation has been at five percent over the past four years. There continues to be a growing population and a stable school enrollment. There are always increased service expectations. There's an extremely competitive labor market, higher costs for current and future benefits. There's rising expenses for risk management, such as school safety and cybersecurity across all of our town departments. We've been experiencing the need for deferred maintenance of our buildings and grounds, and there are always escalating vendor prices. On August twenty-sixth, the Town Finance Director presented a preliminary, presented these preliminary preliminary findings and requested that the Select Board provide a budget directive asking town departments to prepare a level-funded plus-two-and-a-half percent budget as well as a department-requested budget. In our case, we're calling that our real needs. So after closing out fiscal year 2024 this past summer, the school department has been working on creating that FY twenty-six budget. Our budget development process includes figuring out our actual staffing costs after rolling into a new school year. And to offer some perspective into this process, we have between four and five hundred district staff members and coaches. This year, we have one hundred and fourteen new hires and/or internal transfers so far into the twenty-four-twenty-five school year. And last year, we off-boarded or exited approximately eighty staff members to close out the twenty-three-twenty-four school year. And so when you're creating a budget, you're doing it with the current staff projecting what the cost might be in the next year. Throughout the month of September, while we are also opening a new school year and all that entails, we are also starting the budget process and meeting with the building principals and directors to iron out anticipated student needs for the subsequent school year. During these meetings, we discuss real needs as well as the difficult conversation of where we can make staffing expense and programmatic reductions with the least impact possible to students. And I always want to justify that by saying any decisions about staffing reductions will have a significant impact on students. However, these difficult reduction decisions are made carefully and thoughtfully, knowing that we still need to be able to operate safely as individual schools and as a public school district. Schools do not run themselves, and systems must be in place to ensure organizational safety and efficiency, and that we remain compliant with legal mandates as well as with state and federal accountability and reporting requirements. We always use a zero-based budgeting approach in that we use projected student enrollment numbers and historical data to estimate staffing needs in terms of class size, caseload size, support services, and organizational operating needs. When we are able to make staffing reductions or operational efficiencies, we do so as part of our yearly yearly budget development process. An example of this is while we added five-point-five positions during ESAR, between FY twenty-five and our real needs scenario for FY twenty-six, there will, there have been or will be thirteen-point-five net reductions in our staffing. That's with our level services. On October ninth, we presented to you our anticipated FY twenty-six capital requests. On November thirteenth, we met with the Fiscal Advisory Committee to discuss these capital requests and answer any questions from the Fiscal Advisory Members. Next year's school department capital requests include elementary literacy curriculum and high school math curriculum to ensure that our district is utilizing high-quality and vertically-aligned instructional instructional materials as recommended by DESI. Our current elementary literacy program is not DESI-aligned. Also included in our capital requests are technology devices and infrastructure replacements, roof repair, abatement, Chandler bird netting, and repairs to the Chandler School wheelchair ramp and loading dock. We first presented to you the anticipated FY twenty-six budget at the November sixth school committee meeting. At that time, we shared that our real needs increase request is eight-point-five-one percent, or just over six percent of the level-funded plus-two-point-two-and-a-half percent budget scenario. We shared that the level-funded plus-two-point-five percent scenarios will represent anywhere from eighteen-point-one to twenty-four-point-five reductions in district staff, including teachers, administrators, and other school personnel. Significant expense reductions, including learning materials and resources, will also be required in the level-funded reduction scenarios. In summary, throughout this FY twenty-six budget process, I have shared that the real needs budget represents the same level of services that our students are receiving in the 2024-2025 school year. This school year is the first year in recent memory that our school district is adequately staffed with supports in place for students in Tier One, which is our general education classroom, as well as Tier Two and Tier Three, also with essential infrastructure needs specifically in our special education department. Our real needs budget includes several consolidations of staffing due to enrollment numbers as well. Our real needs budget maintains equity and access to universal full-day kindergarten, keeps class size at appropriate levels, maintains our operational infrastructure, and allows for our educators to be compensated at appropriate levels. Unfortunately, at this time, the current available town funding cannot support our real needs. The level-funded plus-two-and-a-half reduction budget will result in a devastating impact on our school district and will be detrimental to our students. We will be facing the elimination of up to twenty-four-point-eight positions across the district. With the reduction budget, there will be inequity in access to high-quality learning. Class sizes will increase at many levels. Course offerings will be impacted at the secondary level. There will be an increased financial burden on our school-aged families, and our educators will not be compensated at appropriate levels. We have worked hard to rebuild learning post-pandemic and have corrected some destructive gaps in our pre-K to twelve educational program. We now have intervention opportunities at all levels, including at our middle and high school. We are seeing our students succeed academically as well as socially and emotionally. We have heard from our educators that current conditions enable them to focus on teaching and meeting the needs of their students. We are seeing improved assessment scores, gains in attendance. We have career pathways and options for students, and fewer students as being, are being identified as at risk. We have moved up in the rankings as a top-performing school district, and we continue to see joy in our schools every day, which is our main focus. I just wanted to bring us back to our four-year strategic plan that we created in 2022, and even at that time, we knew that we were headed for a night like tonight and the next few months that our community is facing. We identified as a community the following priorities, and keep in mind that this strategic planning committee made up, was made up of community members, school committee members, students, parents, teachers, administrators. We knew at that time that we needed to provide individualized learning experiences for our students using culturally-responsive learning strategies and high expectations. We knew we needed to ensure that there is high-quality vertically-aligned curriculum in place for students with high academic rigor. We agreed to conduct a compensation study to ensure that DPS staff are compensated competitively. We knew we needed to educate the community about real school department needs, including operating budget and capital projects. And we also committed to submitting a statement of interest to the MSBA to be considered for a building project for Alden School, which I will be able to provide an update on at the meeting in January. In a moment, I will turn the mic over to Lisa Freely, our Director of Business and Finance, to go over the FY twenty-six number details, but in conclusion, the current reality that our community is facing is that the available funding available to the town departments is the level-funded plus-two-and-a-half percent, which represents an increase of one million eighty-one thousand two-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars over last year's budget. As I shared back on November sixth, Duxbury residents cite its high-quality school system as its most valued community asset. Right now, I fear that the high-quality school system is at risk unless drastic measures are taken to ensure that appropriate funding for the schools becomes available in the coming months. Throughout the fall, we have shared with the school committee and the greater community what our school district needs are and what is at risk in the coming months if measures are not taken to fill the current financial gaps. It will be essential for our school community and town departments to band together to ensure that our town services do not suffer despite the current budgetary shortfall. Thank you.
Yep, I'll pull up the slide deck. Is your mic? Good evening. First, I'd like to share, I'd like to start off by sharing that the budget scenarios that were presented on November sixth, 2024, are the same totals that we are going to discuss today in terms of the bottom-line dollar amount and the percentages that were provided and the corresponding percentages. I've included in the slide deck the scenarios by cost center in tonight's presentation as well as corresponding exhibits in your packet, beginning with exhibit sixteen for these new cost centers that are in line with the DESI cost categories. In addition, I've provided an additional exhibit for each scenario based on the cost centers presented tonight and the corresponding Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Function Codes, which is a segment in our expense account numbers in our financial system. This will allow you to see what expense categories are within each cost center. These begin with exhibit nineteen. The projections provided are for through 29, 2029, sorry, and are purely for informational purposes only. They reflect a 4% budget increase year-over-year. These future projections are assumptions using an annual year-over-year increase of 4% and are, as I said, informational purposes only. They do not consider actual fixed cost adjustments, contractual obligations, or future contract I'm happy to review the slides for this evening and the numbers again, answer any questions or when you're ready, I'm to turn it back to the committee for discussion. But I can just real quick go through this slide, which is how the budget was built. Oops, sorry. So as a refresher, our final appropriated budget for FY25 is $43,250,348. With a number of increases and some reductions, that brings our real needs budget to $46,931, $31,022, which is 8.51%. To get to the level funded budget reduction, there was a number of additional adjustments necessary that brings us down to a level funded plus two and a half budget of $44,331,607 So on this slide are the new cost centers, and this is based on the real needs budget The cost centers are administration, which is any expense category, whether it's salaries or goods and services, where the function code, the DESI function code begins with a 1,000 or a 1. Curriculum instruction, which is the largest portion of our budget, is anything that begins with a 2, so that's where all your staffing, instructional materials, guidance, psychology services all fall. The category, other school services for category 3,000, this includes transportation in district, out-of-district vocational, your athletics, student activities, and food services, although we do not, we budget a very limited amount of food services dollars in our budget for a specific purpose. The 4,000 category is operations and maintenance, so this is where you're going to find your housekeeping items related to the physical plant, maintenance activities, and some additional technology expenditures. Fixed costs are retirement and insurance programs, if we had rental of land and buildings, debt for current loans and other recurring items, which are not generally provided under another function. And lastly, is tuition programs, which is the 9,000 category. And then here, this is transfer of payments to other school districts or to non-public schools for services provided to students residing in the sending city or town. So in here, you'll see your out-of-district costs for special education, vocational tuitions, and if there are any students that go to another public school in the state for any purpose. And so then this, this slide here is, again, the same cost centers with your level funded plus two and a half, reflecting the $1,081,259 increase. And then we can skip to the other. And then here's the other version. Again, bottom line is still the same, $1,081,259, a two-and-a-half percent increase. And then actually go back one slide. And then we've included also for your review and discussion tonight, a refresher of the prioritized capital requests that include the items that Dr. Klingerman spoke about, the curriculum, technology, and number of facilities items with the total prioritized capital requests of $1,445,000. And that's all I have for the moment. Can I answer any questions or if you'd like to take it back and open your discussion?
And fiscal advisory was fine with our capital?
They didn't, I did not walk away feeling that there was an answer one way or the other. There was a lot of discussion, it was a healthy discussion, but I believe there's still additional conversations that need to occur.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, Kelly, I think last night, you know, fiscal advisory was present at VinCom, and it's essentially what you said, which is I don't, they're not in a position to be talking about it because I don't think there's clarity around what's even available at this point. That usually comes from free cash, and free cash is depleted at this point. So there we have it. About the information that Lisa has presented, which is, obviously, is, this is, we've seen this a number of times, it's just in a little bit of a different format. Lisa, can you just speak generally to the offsets that are shown for each, I suppose? If you want to just go slide by slide?
Yep. So we don't have the offsets in here, it's actually an exhibit in the, in the binder, but I can, give me one second.
What number is the exhibit?
I think it's 17, 18, 19, 20.
Hold on.
Or 16, 17. 16, 17, 18.
Those are the new, those are the new function codes.
But the offset column is in there.
Yeah, so the offsets specifically are 12 and 13, and I can just kind of talk through, excuse me, 11 and 12. So in this upcoming year, we are offsetting against the school lunch revolving account. Sorry, can you hear me? Okay. So we are proposing to offset against the school lunch revolving account, which is something we've done in the past, and we have increased the offset to that. We have an offset against Magic Dragon, which, again, is something that we've done in the past. We have an offset to the middle and high school co-curriculars, co-curricular accounts, similar to the past, although that amount has been increased, no, that's remained steady. We have the offset to the athletic revolving account, we have a new offset to a grant, innovation pathways, and then our special education offsets, which are a tuition revolving account, circuit breaker, which has increased over last year due to increased funding that we received in this year, and then a slight reduction to our special education IDEA 240 grant, which, again, is something that we regularly do. We have increased our offset to the preschool tuition revolving account for this year. We have received additional funding for the early education 262 grant, and so that's been an offset we've done in the past. We're also doing a new offset against the cable monies, the PEG access monies that we've recently been, been able to access. We are maintaining our offset to the school bus revolving, and we are maintaining our offset to the high school revolving. So without, without kindergarten, that discussion, the offset is 3049113. If we were to increase the offset for kindergarten, it would be 3499113, if we were to implement that or re-implement that. So just as a standing, it's 3049113, which is not. So just for a point of reference, let me go back to that, because I'm blind and I can't see anything. Our offsets this coming year are down by just about $200,000 with no longer having ESAR funding and kindergarten.
Has there, in the history of the district or before, when we decided to have one-to-one devices, I'm just curious if there's ever been any thought or conversation around fees for devices, utilization of devices?
No.
No?
No, the one-to-one was instituted with Ventantilla. It was, the town used to pay, part of it came out of the town budget, and then we rolled it into the operating budget, and then we switched to our current Chromebooks because it was unsustainable.
And the Chromebooks are leased with capital monies?
Yeah. And the, I think the original laptops that were the Apple MacBook Airs were also leased?
Yes.
But that's been capital projects, but we had a significant cost savings with switching to Chromebooks, but we had never spoken about charging for the use of devices or not being one-to-one. But we continue to encourage our families to utilize the school district insurance, which does help with some of the repair costs that we're able to make with families that utilize that insurance.
So that's what I was gonna ask, the, the fees that people pay to purchase the insurance go into a revolving account?
Yes.
That then funds?
The repairs for the student devices.
So it's just direct, it just goes right out?
Right. As a pastor, essentially.
Okay. It doesn't support the staffing of the IT department?
No, it's not, it's not a large amount.
Well, we're on Chromebooks, one other question, I know in the capital needs plan, there's the fifth grade Chromebooks, and I, is that a contract requirement we've already agreed to, or is that something that we're asking for?
The Chromebook, the grade five Chromebook replacement, we currently, and I could be wrong about this, the Chromebooks that are being, being utilized at Alden School are some of the, they're some of the revamped, older MacBook Airs that we turned into Chromebooks, and so we have been working to replace one grade level at a time at the elementary to have updated Chromebooks to make sure that we're compliant with the MCAS operating system requirements. So that was for one grade level, to have new Chromebooks next year.
Okay. And I know we, in, what's it called, in the consent agenda we approved basically getting rid of some of the, like, 2000, you know, 20-year-old surplus, thank you, that's the word. Okay, so that, for MCAS, I guess, there is a requirement for Chromebooks. I'm just thinking back to more data coming out about the use of technology in classrooms, and is it a requirement of the ELA or math or science curriculum in the elementary, like K through 5? Do we need to be providing Chromebooks in these classrooms? Is it something that we want to think about steering away from? I think there's been some public comment, feedback, I've heard feedback in the community, so just a thought, as we're considering costs. And it wasn't, it wasn't a small cost for those Chromebooks, but if it's required for MCAS purposes, I'm not sure how you would get away from that.
Well, the operating system is required.
It's the operating system needs to be updated, but we utilize the Chromebooks for iReady and for different curriculum program assessments and access, and so it is important that we have enough devices for our students because it becomes challenging when, if you're sharing devices, so we try to be one-on-one so that we have enough so that a whole grade level or a whole school could be doing assessments at the beginning of the school year without rotating.
Okay.
I think most of the programs in the curriculum that we utilize nowadays does have some online component to it.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
So is K to 5 one-on, one-to-one?
K to 5 has enough devices one-to-one, and we utilize some iPads at the Chandler School, and then we start to transition the kids to Chromebooks in grade 2, and also to make sure they have opportunities for keyboarding prior to grade 3, when they have to be able to do their MCAS. So we do have enough devices so that we are one-on-one, K through 12.
But they remain in the schools during?
Yes, we only have the students take them home in grade 6 for the first time.
Is there a sense that we would prioritize curriculum if, if there was an option to fund one or not, and not the other?
In terms of capital?
Yeah.
So the capital requests, we have prioritized from a larger list, that group, if the fiscal advisory committee came back to us and said that there was a dollar amount that they would be able to support, we would have to go back and reprioritize that list. So we would meet with facilities director to see if there's any of the facilities requests that could be put off, but certainly looking at where we are with the pilot this year, the ELA curriculum at the elementary would continue to be a top priority. There are times, we do try to put off technology so that we're not asking for everything in one year, so we have technology items that are up for next year that we put off from this year. So those, we'd have to meet with our CTO and with the technology department to see if there's any way we could put off some of the access point replacement in terms of our Wi-Fi and other infrastructure, in terms of switches, and so we would have to reprioritize the list, but I would say that the ELA curriculum would remain at the top of the list.
I guess a question about Unit A, I think I fairly well understand why the amount is the amount and why we're asking for it this year, but given, you know, the statement you read and the meetings that I've been listening to from a town level, is it possible to have flexibility to spread that amount out over two budget periods where we could move, and I, you know, I think I've read between the lines why we might need to have, or we would want to have a full amount, but is that something that is a possibility or we can talk about as we're discussing the budget this evening? Is it, is it a, you know, and I have not done contract negotiations yet, but it, could it be potentially like a two year, over two years, or, I know that we've done that with some?
Yeah, I think that any of the items in the real need, real needs are going to be up for discussion moving forward after this evening. I think when you talk about contract negotiations and the need for a market adjustment, that, bringing that out for the community to be aware of, that that is an issue we're facing. Certainly, anything that we do would be a negotiation with Unit A themselves as well as with school committee, and so I think that, I can't speak for the DTA, but I can say that market adjustments can be done over a period of several years, and they don't need to be done all at once.
Thank you.
And would the market adjustment be negotiated, and tell me, this is something we should not be speaking about, if, if Unit A, is it, is the market adjustment negotiated separate from the negotiation of the three-year contract that will begin in the spring of this, no, the spring of 2026?
Yep, so our contract was set to expire at the end of June this year, and so we, we were able to work with both school committee and the Unit A to extend the current contract so that we would be able to enter a contract negotiation during the next school year, so FY26 would, would be when we would be meeting. If, in an ideal world, a market adjustment became available to us in the spring, we would have to open a negotiation with Unit A, and at that time, we would be able to decide if we would like to enter into the next three-year contract negotiation at that time, or whether we would like to propose an adjustment that would be part of that one final year that was left in the contract we just extended, and so all of those things would be, we would have to open up a contract negotiation, and we'd have to put our teams together. So that could happen at the end of the school year, or it could be something- So that could happen at the end of the school year, or it could be something that would happen during a successor agreement.
Thank you. I have one more question or more of, I guess, a comment as I've been thinking about the scenarios that we're in, none of them great. We've had a lot of public comment here in these meetings, we've received messages from the community individually and as a group over the last several weeks. Nobody wants any positions to be reduced, and I, you know, that's not our position to decide those things, but one of the things I've been thinking about, and I think others have been thinking about as well, is reading has time and again come up as imperative to give the support to our children, K through 12, if they need it. This is, nothing is popular to say, to say these things, but for thinking about K through five in particular and the, the amount of support we have heard about and received regarding the reading specialists and instructional assistants and the support in the classrooms, we have to have thought this through, I'm sure, but to me, you know, world language is such a great asset that we have in this town, and I would never want to take that away, but if we had to pick between, you know, Spanish in first grade or a reading specialist, I guess I'm a little bit perplexed as to, and, you know, again, it's not our decision, but it's just something I've been thinking about, and I'm sure you all have as well. If and when we have to make those decisions, I would ask, I think that we rethink some of the positions that we've highlighted so far to date.
I think that what's important to consider is when you're looking at specials, those are by contract, we need to provide prep time for our teachers on a daily basis, and so there's a set number of minutes per week, per day, that our teachers are entitled to planning time and PLC time, and Spanish is during one of those planning times. And so it would not be, to, to consider reducing or moving a special would not necessarily be something that we could easily change because we wouldn't be meeting the teacher contract. And so that's when we, that's when the, that's where one of the specials that the students go to.
So contract negotiation would potentially be a time to think about those things, like planning time or?
Yeah, that's all, planning time and specials and all of those things do come up at contract negotiations and minutes. We spend a lot of time talking about that.
Because it just seems, you know, teachers seem to, well, they value planning time, it's like, necessar, and what we've all been saying, like, nobody wants to be making these decisions, but if you have to choose planning time versus having a reading specialist in the classroom, I would think that would come up in discussion through contract negotiations of what, you know?
As a former teacher, and you can't cut planning time?
You can't.
No, because you can't expect teachers to teach multiple classes a day without having any time in between, that might not be the same class, it might not be the same level, you can't cut planning time.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
Right.
For the, for budget purposes, not for teachers.
Of course.
Okay.
Matt?
No, I don't, I don't have any questions that, you know, go beyond what I asked a couple of weeks ago, and I thought the meeting with the Finance Committee last week was really illuminating, so I don't, I don't think I have any questions. I mean, I will say I'm just, as always, I'm grateful for the transparency and clarity in this budget and the exhibits and the presentation, not to mention the hundreds of hours of work. I know it's like a huge heavy lift, so just really appreciate the development of the budget, I know it's really challenging. And I know it's a large ask, and I'm really sensitive to the, to the tax burden that's being placed on the town, but, you know, over the course of the last month, I haven't been able to find anything in this budget that I would look at as aspirational or frivolous or unreasonable. So I think all my questions have been answered.
And yeah, Lisa, thank you for the cost centers, because that is new to me. I know it's a lot of work.
I'm going to take the opportunity to be the bearer of bad news here, to provide some context for what we have for us tonight in a vote. So, I don't, I don't know how many people watched Finance Committee last night, I would encourage anyone, although I think it hasn't been posted yet, or maybe the recording wasn't able to be done because of some technical difficulties. But I think it's important for the community to understand the context in which all of the departments are operating right now, and Danielle certainly provided sort of the higher-level context of the why and the how. But for us tonight, there are some things that we need to, to understand as a committee for our vote. And that is that by law, our town manager has to present a balanced budget, which is level funded two and a half, because that is what the current tax levy allows, that is what our town can pay for. All of the, all of the departments have obviously been directed to develop the balanced budget for that reason, because that is the number that is needed to go into the larger budget document that the town manager then presents. We are the only lucky department that has a committee that has to make a vote on a budget, all the other departments present their budgets and they're accounted for, and, you know, they're delivered to Finance Committee and they're put into the, the budget that the manager presents. So I think what's important to understand tonight is that the vote that we take, level funded plus two and a half, is again, what the town can support with the current tax base, it's what will make up Article Five at the town meeting, and that isn't going to change because that is what is available to fund our town departments. If we choose to vote the real needs budget, as much as anyone might want to do so because of all of the things that we've heard tonight, and what all of the parents understand about that budget and why it's so critically important, if we do so, we are delivering a recommendation to our town manager that is $2,599,415 over what our town has to spend. And what that will do is it will require the town manager, in order to create a balanced budget, to take $2,599,415 from all of the other departments in our town to fund the budget that the school committee is recommending. So, I want everyone to understand that that is the context in which we are making our decision tonight. And I made a statement at the last meeting, and I think Danielle spoke to this in her statement, which is that the school department does not operate in a vacuum, we are part of this community, the people that work in the buildings, many are taxpayers and they are part of this community. We are certainly all taxpayers and members of this community. And so I wanted to reiterate the fact that we have to all do this together every year, and I think the town boards and committees have done a ton of work in the name of doing that together, so that we are all on the same page and understand the impact of the decisions that we make in individual departments, the decision that the committee makes when they make a vote, and what that means for, for the community when that recommendation is made. So, that is the context in which we are voting tonight, when we recommend a budget number to the town manager. Yes, that would be actually very helpful, I think, especially if that meeting is not actually available to be, to be watched.
Yeah. Our tech is a little lame. The, last night when we voted, it wasn't that, in fact, it was very difficult for me to get the Finance Committee to support, and thank you Laurel, because she came, you know, suffered through all of our conversation, which was, which was kind, but the, nobody was in favor of the level plus two and a half. It means there's 13 town side, which proportionally is, you know, pretty close to what you're doing. Like, Dr. Klingerman and, and, and her group, they had to speak to all the department heads and explain that the layoffs that would infect each of these departments, which is, I wouldn't wish that conversation on my worst enemy. And, but what we were faced with is we need to have a balanced budget as an option. So what the Finance Committee is, is going to do is we voted a balanced budget because we had to. It has to be delivered to the Selectman on the ninth, and this is what it's going to look like, and it's ugly. At that point, we are now beginning our work to get the real needs. You've got one department, a huge department, but we're working with 17 different groups trying to make sure, and Finance Committee's working with the town manager and Finance Director to solidify the real needs budget. You've done a tremendous amount of work, I don't know if there's more work to do or not do, that's your purview, not mine. But when we go to town meeting, if there is not a successful override vote, the funds that are available to you are Plan B or Plan, we called it Plan A, you're calling it Plan B, the level funded plus two and a half. And nobody is happy about it. But we have to, in order to get our tax rate set by the state, in order to conduct business, we have to have a balanced budget, we have to have enough money to support what we're appropriating. It's that simple. You can't cash a check when you haven't got money in the bank. And so the work begins now. We know the, we know the repercussion of doing a balanced budget, it's going to be presented to the Selectman on Monday, I will be there, and, you know, I know some of you will probably be there as well. And at that point, the discussion will be, okay, what's the real needs number we need to determine? And we're also meeting, the task forces meeting again to come up with a recommendation for the Selectman Friday, Friday? And we will go to them and make a recommendation, as the Finance Committee did last night, that they need to enter, they need to entertain an article for an override. So when you go to town meeting, just so you're not surprised, we have to pass a balanced budget, because if the next budget fails, either at town meeting or at the ballot, we need to have an approved, town meeting approved, balanced budget, or we can't do business. So if we go in there and everybody's upset and they vote down the balanced budget, and only vote an override budget, and it fails at the ballot, we have to then call another town meeting to, once again, bring the balanced budget to the voters and vote it. So it's, it's kind of an inevitable position that we're in. But it is, it is done as a, as a seatbelt so that we can then proceed and work with our community to present the real needs budget, which I'm not saying is a full eight and a half percent, I'm not, and I'm not saying it's not, but that, that conversation is now going to be taking place over January and February, or probably be done by January so that we have time to communicate it to the community. And I, I said last night, I think I was on TV, I'm not sure at this point whether it heard, but I'm, I'm happy to speak to any group, to explain the process, to explain what we need to do, and answer questions on the repercussions of what this means. And I think the only really good news is that we are all working together, everybody understands. So in the community, we have some very strong focused interest groups. I won't say special interests because that sounds negative, and I'm not being negative, they're focused interests, people love the fire department, they love the schools, they love the environment. But each and every one of these groups will be impacted by this balanced budget, and I think it's a great opportunity to come together as a community to support each other and, and make some good decisions. So, you know, I'm, I don't know how you want to do it, what we did was we voted the balanced budget with the understanding that it was not something that, that any of us really wanted to see happen, and now we start to work on the second half. Does that help explain where we, I, because even though, and you all knew, you were in front of the Finance Committee, you sensed our support, we weren't, we weren't thinking that anybody was asking for anything that was, that was crazy or outlandish, it was all just good, you know, you have got a fabulous group of professionals that advise you, and they have killed themselves trying to figure this out to their best ability, and, and we recognize, even the Finance Committee recognized that. So I imagine you know it quite well. So that's all. Do you have any questions about what happened at Finance? Because I'm happy to answer if you do. No?
I could hear, hear you and see you on video last night.
Oh, did you?
It did work, yeah.
Well, I don't know if that's.
And I, I think something else you spoke about that resonated and would resonate with people is, you know, this is chapter one, and it's been a heck of a long chapter, right? Very, very intricate, involved. After Monday, we begin chapter two.
Right.
And none of us are happy with this balanced budget that we've been presented with, and the town manager is tasked with presenting on Monday. But the, the, the goal is that we have a chapter two that gives us an opportunity to really explore the real needs, not only for our department, but the other departments in the community.
I made one promise last year at, at town meeting, and that was that we would have data for people to support any decisions in future budgets. And you have certainly supplied the data, you know, Lisa's computer probably has smoke coming out of it most days, and Mary has done an amazing job as the Finance Director supplying data as well. We can supply the data, it will be up to the community as to whether they accept that as a decision or not. But it is chapter two, and it, and I think it's an opportunity. I mean, I think for years, people have been asking us, you know, is this real? How are you spending your money? What does this mean? What does that mean? And we have, I spent a lot of quality time with Laurel and Danielle and Lisa this summer, the task force, I mean, I don't, what did we meet, 12, 14 times over the summer? It was, it was intense, but we examined every department, and I feel very, not that I always haven't, but I feel extremely comfortable now with the numbers and how they play out. So that's why I'm so cocky is to say I'll do, talk to people. No?
Thank you.
No worries.
Thank you.
So I think, is everybody clear on the process, meaning the process in the next two weeks, and what, what will transpire essentially in terms of process, not outcome?
Yes. Oh, it's great that capital's first on our action item list. It is. Does anybody want to discuss capital? I feel like we touched on a couple pieces of it. I think, I just want to second what, what Kathy articulated, that I think, you know, we can, we can make the ask, this is a priority list that I think we all understand. I would just sort of echo the importance of the ELA curriculum for the elementary because we have begun those pilots and we're sort of moving in that direction anyway. Not that vertical alignment for math is not important.
Right.
But it would be, in my opinion, very challenging if we cannot proceed with, with the, the implementation next, next school year of ELA. So, as long as that's clear, if we have to make decisions.
Okay, so capital, we vote as one number?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, we don't have to.
Yeah, we don't have to go through the individual asks. Is there any further decision on capital, or does anyone want to weigh in on how we do these next steps? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the FY '26 capital budget request?
Second.
Do we have to say the number?
I think so.
Oh, yeah, you're right. At $1,445,000. Thank you, Matt. Do I have to redo the motion, or is that noted in the minutes? Okay. Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
I'm struggling a little bit, because I think we still have a little bit of a challenge in front of us, in that we have, we're sort of viewing three budgets at this point in time.
Do you want to do this to speak?
Pardon?
Do you want to do each talk?
Well, I guess that's what I'm inviting, is there's a conversation now about how we proceed, and which budget we proceed with, based on the information that I shared, and the information that Betsy offered, as it relates to a vote, which is essentially a recommendation to the town, on what the school budget number.
I guess one question I have is, last night, you know, there was discussion about the budget that was approved or voted last night or recommended, is the budget that potentially the committee could have to live with, right? And, I know that the time was taken to go line by line, department by department, to discuss and hold different items. For us, there are three options, but really, it's a two and a half option and an eight and a half option. There are two two and a half options. Do we, if we simply approve a two and a half option, does that number after, you know, if that is what ultimately is what we deal with come March, are these lines, right, decided tonight, depending if it's option, I don't know if it's A or B, or one or two, or whatever, for the two and a half, are we beholden to option one or option two, or is it just that number that then we can move things around, as a matter of process? I guess it's more of a procedure.
So, I think you're voting on the overall number for the funding we have available, which is the level funding plus two and a half, and then the cost centers.
So, we are voting on the specific cost centers?
The challenge we have with what we have in front of us is that
That's what you're saying. Okay.
The cost centers, we are going to vote each individual cost center with a motion, yes. And then, we vote the bottom line. Obviously, those cost centers all add up to the bottom line.
Yep.
But, that is...
Okay, so we are, we're voting by cost center. Okay.
That's the, that is how we are supposed to vote the budget, as a committee. So, I mean, the bottom line, as you point out, is the same. The variation between them
Right.
is...
It's in the curriculum and instruction, cost center.
Yes.
Is the, when we have two options, exhibit 17 and 18 in our
Yep.
packets.
Can you, is it possible to put the exhibits up, just because I'm not sure? I mean, I know they're not in the presentation, but this is what we're going to be voting, or I guess we can vote.
Yeah, is it those, it's those costs?
Yep.
So, it's like the triple zero.
It's like 17 and 19.
Yeah, so it's just like a half dozen of them, five.
Yeah, we have six, there's six cost centers, and then the grand total.
Oh, Kelly, you want to ask that question out loud?
I'm not, Lisa, I'm not, okay, so, this cost centers thing is new, so bear with me. Level funded option one and level funded option two?
Yep.
I'm not seeing a percentage difference. 199.71, 1387, 508, 01203.
It's in the offsets column, Kelly.
Thank you. So...
So, then if you look at the percentage budget, that's where you're, that's where you end up seeing the greater difference? So, for example, in an option one, the dollar difference is $34,000.
What column are you in?
I am in, one, two, three, four, five, six. It's a difference dollar amount.
Yep, okay.
Right? So, administration, we're just going to focus on administration, since it's the first one. That amount is a year-over-year difference of plus $34,531. In option two, the year-over-year difference of that is minus $92,469.
So, basically, option two is, we're paying for full day kindergarten?
Option two is inclusive of full day kindergarten, yes.
Got it. Well, I guess I'll say my piece. You know, I always say I'm the pragmatic one. You can't write the check if there isn't enough money in the account, and the town's been really good to us. And, somehow, the town has always found a way to give us more money than, you know, initially proposed through magic. But, this is the first year, and I am sick to my stomach, because this is the first year where it's not going to happen. And, I so want to vote a love, I mean, I so want to vote a Real Needs Budget, but I would never, and I've never advocated for taking money from other town departments. And, there was a letter today in the Clipper where the police chief is asking for new hires. And, he's not, you know, with this budget, he's not going to get that either. So, it's going to be up to the town. We are really at that point where we're going to have to have an override to maintain our schools. And, it's, there's no way, it cannot affect staffing. So, with the two scenarios, I obviously, and I've said this all along, I don't want to see 18 staff members cut, administration positions, people who see our kids every day, who make the difference between whether your child is successful or struggles, right? So, I am going to advocate for the cost center where families still have to pay for kindergarten, because I don't want to see 24 positions cut. 18 is sickening enough. So, that's how I feel.
And, Betsy, to your comment about 13 and other budgets, 13 was our original go-in before we got to. So, to get to two and a half, we're up to 18, no matter what.
I think proportionally, it works out with the number of staff that we're looking at for the town and the school. So, it's, everybody's, everybody's...
Right.
Percentage-wise, it's
Yeah.
Because ours are so much higher to begin with.
Well, we
Teach the whole town.
The reason I asked the question about the fees earlier, is because I would like to imagine that there is a way for us to support universal kindergarten, because, and I can only speak for myself, but I believe, and I think we have made the case last year, and we made the case in the materials this year, with help of our professionals who are in those buildings that serve those kids. I think we all understand that a full day of kindergarten is a public school education. And, to invite families, or to require families to pay for something that is in fact necessary for their student to be successful, as they proceed through the public school system, from the seat I'm sitting in as a school committee member, and having to make the decision about what is in the best interests of our students from an educational standpoint, I cannot support tuition payments for what I understand to be a public school education. And, I think I've certainly said that before. That's not to say that I want to cut 24 and a half teachers. I have to make the decision with the information that I have in front of me. The cuts are unfortunately the responsibility of our administration, and making the recommendation around how to get to the number. We're looking at the number. And, so, I would challenge, in collaboration, if this, in fact, this unfortunate circumstance transpires, for us to find a way to spread the shortfall, if you will, so that it doesn't fall on kindergarten families alone, to support what we, the number that we have. I think right now, we're all focused on the level funded option, because of the information that we've just heard. But, I don't want to be presumptuous, because again, until we make a motion to proceed with a vote on any of these, all three options are still in front of us. So, at this point, this is still a discussion of the budget scenarios in which we're reviewing, that we are reviewing. Just to be crystal clear, Lisa, level funded option one is charging for tuition?
Yes.
of how we get to those numbers, we rely on our professionals in the buildings to find resolution there. So, and as we saw the earlier exhibits, there are cost transfers between cost centers as the year goes on, and/or a reset in quarter one, because of our budget process being so much earlier than we actually start running the budget, correct?
Yep. So, in theory, we're tied into the bottom line, dollar. Yes, that's the funding we have available to us at this moment, whether or not we agree with what that represents. And, if we vote by cost center now, and it, you know, doesn't, we don't end up with the override, can, we can, I mean, can transfers be made, I guess, out of cost centers to with different scenarios?
Yeah, I think that's what Laurel was just saying, which we would approve.
There would have to be a recommendation made
Mm-hmm.
from the administration, to change something, to move or transfer monies. And, there would be a justification that would need to be provided, obviously. That happens in any situation, not just the one we are speaking about.
We would certainly know that the desire is not to charge full day kindergarten tuition, if we find ourselves in that scenario. So, I think that we always have a commitment to try to do every alternative that we possibly can to fulfill that. And, if there's different information available to us at that time, we will certainly, nothing is set in stone. We have an early process. However, I don't think we'll see a drastic difference in our recommendations. And, I can't say for sure, but right now, where we are in the beginning of December, the reductions that we've recommended are the ones we've identified as having the least impact. Could that change slightly between now and April, perhaps? And, I think sometimes the state funding can be slightly adjusted. Last year, the Chapter 70 funding didn't become finalized until the summer. And, so, I think that there's always some unknowns in terms of our budget. And, I think we might have to just move forward with the recommendation that you make tonight, and knowing that our last desire is to charge kindergarten tuition. But, right now, there's just too much unknown. And, we've done our best effort to try to spread out the reductions where we think they will have the least negative impact to students.
Betsy, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just from your knowledge. So, we're 6% apart with our Real Needs Budget, right, from the two and a half percent. So, when and if the Select Board recommended an override number, it could be any number. It could be 4% for the whole, how does that work?
It won't be a percentage. It will be a dollar amount.
Dollar amount, okay.
So, what will happen, and, you know, I sometimes hear what I'm going to say, and I try to make it so that it's not, it doesn't come off too harsh. But, we're voting, we already, our recommended budget to town meeting is the balanced budget.
Mm-hmm.
So, whatever you vote is going to be impactful as far as, you know, talking to the Selectmen, advocating for what, but the balanced budget is going to be presented by the Finance Committee, which is the balanced budget.
No, I understand that. So, we have to, our hands are tied. We have to vote a balanced budget.
Right, I know.
And then, but, to get to an override, I guess my question is, we wait and see, and then try to figure out the rest of our budget?
The work starts after we present. When they, when the Selectmen, or the warrant article is placed for an override, we're going to be going to work, I'm sure you're going to be going to work, on what that, the number that would satisfy the real needs of the community, and what honestly, what we feel the community will support.
Okay, so we give them a dollar number?
It would be, it would be, the Selectmen will put a dollar number, or we will put a dollar number.
Finance Committee makes a recommendation.
So, they will, yeah.
You don't, you don't, it's not like you've given us the bill. So, there would just be a dollar number that we feel that the community can support
Yep.
that will give us enough in the levy, reset the levy, so that we don't have this much fun every year, and that we can proceed.
And, the departments work together to figure out how that number gets broken down.
Right, and what that would entail. So, obviously, that's going to be with input from you all, and, you know, Danielle, and Lisa, everybody here.
To get to that number.
I will, I will tell you that the Finance Committee is fairly supportive of kindergarten. I mean, you know how I feel. I'm, it's my kryptonite. It makes me nuts. But, But the, that the kindergarten was voted last year and that the town has spoken.
Right, but.
It's not our business, I'm just passing on that.
I understand that, and I understand that we're one of only a few towns that doesn't pay for full day kindergarten, but that's a decision Duxbury made years ago. And you can't pick a year where we have zero money and we have to cut 24 teachers. To me, that's just not a good decision. And I don't know, I get it.
We're not going to agree on it. So I don't want to debate it with you, it's not appropriate right now. But I feel, you know, I mean, I think that that could be, I don't know if that's the hill you want to die on. There you go. But, so the balanced budget will be the balanced budget. And then, I mean, Danielle and Lisa and, you know, Laurel, and everybody will tell you, we want to work with you, we want to figure out a number that makes sense for everybody that we think will pass muster at town meeting with the whole community and more importantly, at the ballot box. Because even if it passes at town meeting, if it fails at the ballot,
Right, back to zero.
We're back to square, we're back to balanced budget. And that's the most honest place in America, don't you think? People can tell you anything, but when they go in the ballot, that's a very honest moment. And it's people, you know, it's, it's an expensive town to live in. So there you go. But yeah, that's, that is the ballot, that is the budget that will be presented at town meeting.
I think Kelly, we can vote the eight and a half if we haven't decided that yet, but.
In theory.
Well, I guess in theory, but.
If you're voicing your support to not do that, that's fine.
But then you would be potentially taken from the other departments, which I loved your comment, I thought your comments were fantastic about that.
Yeah, that's just not a thing.
It is, it is in our purview to vote whichever option we want.
Yes, I understand that, yeah.
I don't want to shorten a discussion that should continue, but I also don't want to draw anything out that doesn't need to be drawn out. So does anybody else have any thoughts or things they want to say before we move forward? Or I would invite someone to make a motion, certainly doesn't have to be me.
Well, if we made a motion, we're just starting with cost center 1,000, right?
Well, no, first we have to, I think in the motion, you have to identify which budget we're talking about. And then we begin.
So that would be, the implication would be that we would vote a full cost center from one of the three scenarios? Not a portion of it? Or could we do a portion of it?
Could, I don't, I'm not totally, I'm not following.
No.
Well, I'm trying, I mean, so, yeah. I think what you're saying is that we have to vote by cost center and that has to roll up to a total number. So when you say we should indicate which budget we're looking at when we do a cost center, are we handcuffed to a total amount that's in one of these three scenarios? Because what I think what I'm hearing, unless I'm mishearing it, like we're talking about having questions about bits of curriculum and kindergarten and stuff, all that has impact on cost centers.
Correct.
Curriculum isn't, you know, parts of a curriculum don't make up the full curriculum instruction cost center from any of those things. So like if someone made a persuasive enough point to say like, oh, you know, we could save $20,000 on curriculum by doing something different with the computers, we wouldn't be voting the full cost center for any of those three scenarios. That's just my question, I'm just, it's just a clarification question.
Yeah, I mean, I think any member could make a motion to change the cost center for any given reason.
Yeah.
I think my perception of sort of what we're viewing is that these are the recommended options from the administration. And so.
Yeah, so I, like I said before, I'm sensitive to the tax burden on the town. My strong sort of opinion is that, you know, we're heading in a direction of an override. I'm respectful of the fact that that override may not pass either at town meeting or in the ballot box. And I understand we have to work with other departments to, you know, come up with a number that's going to be palatable to the select board and ultimately the town. Having said that, I can't find anything in this budget, in this real needs budget, that to me is not a real need. So, you know, we can have, like, I'm certainly open though to be persuaded differently, you don't have to do that. But I'm certainly open to be persuaded differently at cost center, but I just haven't heard anything. So I've heard like kindergarten, and then that's been, you know, that's been debated. So if this is where I stand, if someone has some persuadable stuff on different cost centers and bits of cost centers, I'm totally open to listening to it and deliberating on it.
Within the real needs, you mean? Or are you just talking about generally across the board?
In general, like, so I'm supportive of the real needs budget. But I'm also, you know, part of my job is to listen to the other school committee members and deliberate on key points. So if people have key points about these different cost centers where we think we can sort of come to an agreement that it could be lower than real needs, I'm open to have that discussion.
I mean, I think, you know, as all the members of finance committee articulated repeatedly last night, how outrageous it felt to be forced to support something that in practice, they do not support. And I would agree with you, Matt, that obviously in practice and an understanding of what it takes for our students to have the educational experience that aligns with our goals and the mission of the district is certainly the real needs budget. Unfortunately, the context in which we are operating, I cannot support a recommendation that would demand that we take 2 and 1/2 million dollars from the other departments in the town. And that is essentially what we would be recommending. And we don't get to decide, we turn, you know, sort of like pass the buck and turn that over to the town manager and the finance committee to go to all the other departments and explain that they're going to need to make those cuts. And so, again, intellectually, emotionally, I completely understand that. I just, at this point in time with the information that I have that I understand about the process, and as I say, I am very hopeful that this is chapter one. It's the reality of the environment in which we are voting tonight.
So where, so that's where I'm getting, that's where I'm heading towards. So where should we, in your opinion and all of your folks' opinion, where should we be looking at to get to a place where we're not getting in that 2 million plus scenario? I'm not challenging anybody, but it's just like so far.
No, we're voting level funded one or two.
No, we can't do kindergarten.
It's level funded one or two.
Level funded one or two.
Those are the recommendations from the administration that fall within the 2 and 1/2 percent. That is the mandate from the town, without pirating other departments.
Well, there's no mandate from the town. Like, we vote on a full number that's made up of cost centers. We can vote whatever number we want. We're in advisory role, we're recommending, just like the finance committee.
We can't vote anything in excess of 2 and 1/2 percent. That's what I meant.
We can't recommend anything in excess of 2 and 1/2 percent?
Well, as we've heard tonight, if we do, then we're taking it from other departments in the town.
I mean, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but we're taking it from other departments in a balanced budget scenario, but that's the whole reason for an override.
Right, so we'll get to that point if we can get the override. That's the next step.
So we vote a second budget?
That's what we're going to be doing. If you, so, I know, this is.
I'm not confused, I don't think I'm confused.
No, 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 well, it is confusing. A balanced budget will be presented at town meeting. A balanced budget will be presented, that will be.
Article five, one article.
Article five, and that will be your horrible budget, right? It is one nobody wants. That has to pass so that we have a guarantee that we can go forward and do business as a community. Then, hopefully, and I feel pretty strongly that there will be a, an article on the warrant in the town meeting for a number, X amount of dollars. And I'm not even going to hazard a guess what X is, because.
A number of what, is that override?
A number, the override number.
Override, okay.
So, and what X means to the individual taxpayers. At that point, we present us, we are presenting a second budget. And the second budget is going to be, okay, the first budget is, the police department is going to have to reduce their, the force by two people, right? And the other budget that was recommended, and I'm not singling out the chief, just, this is the one I remember. It, he wanted two new patrol people in order to provide better service to the town and all good, solid reasons, number of calls and, you know, everybody's got, everybody has their rationale. So we would then have, when we present our second budget, the number would include that or some portion of that to provide what we feel is the real needs. And it, but it would be to support the override amount.
Right.
So we're not going to be looking at voting a second, like line item by line item, although we will certainly provide that detail. To the best of my knowledge, we're not going to do that, maybe, maybe we will. So I shouldn't say that out of hand. But it would be to support the, an override of X. You, would I assume, do the same thing? The power is, or the powerful statement is explaining to people what level funded plus 2 and 1/2 means to the community and the services that we provide. You know, this is, we understand that we have to do a balanced budget, but this means there'll be less cops, there'll be less firemen, there'll be less teachers, there'll be less, and less money to do all of the things that we expect people to do. So that's, that's how we're looking at it.
The balanced budget scenario is the stick.
That's what we're looking, well, it isn't, it's not a threat, it's a reality. So yes, I know what you mean, yes. It is, it is the stick, but it isn't a threat. It's just what we feel is how the monies will be divided up.
Right.
So that's, does that help, or am I making it more confusing?
I, I said, I understand, yeah.
You get it, yeah. So, so we will spend a more amount of time between now and then working on our second chapter two. And so that we, when we come to the town meeting, that we have talked to people and hopefully persuaded them that this is in the best interest of the entire community to support the schools and to support the town departments.
Selling.
So, yeah, and quite honestly, if you vote the higher number, right, it's not going to change what's presented in the balanced budget.
I assume, yeah, absolutely.
I know, I don't think people do, though. I think people think that if you vote another number, that's what's going to be presented at town meeting. And it might be if someone amends the, amends it, and at which point, we would have to suspend the town meeting and go back and rework the numbers. And it would probably be, would call the meeting for a period of time.
Yeah. Well, it's unfortunate that some people would think that, but I think that's the job that all of us have to serve in an educational capacity to help people understand, which is what Ted was saying when we have to sort of sell this stuff.
Well, I don't, I don't, I think people are going to do the right thing.
So do I.
I think, I think it's just a matter of explaining it to them that there really is no easy way here.
That's right.
And the repercussions, and this is what it's going to cost you. And we have 97% residential, we have 3% commercial. We have created this scenario. And I think I said last night, the bill has just come due.
Well, I think that, to your point, we don't have to go down this rabbit hole too far, but to get people to sort of understand what the down payment is, I think we have to do a better job at that. I mean, I'm prepared to say something at the select board meeting on Monday. I mean, a great, a community member gave me a great recommendation that some towns as close as Hingham do a very good job of just putting together a very simple calculator to let residents know what their monthly increase is going to be in their taxes based on the override number.
It's very easy.
What I heard in the select meeting, select board meeting a couple of weeks ago was like, we have a 15-page, a 55-page, you know, spreadsheet of, you know, the assessed values and everything.
The, Danielle, what's the, what's the Department of Labor Statistics?
Good, so we should be directing people to that.
There's a website, I mean, I could, I could tell you what any, any number would impact the average home cost in two seconds. It's just an Excel formula, no big deal.
Then we got to do that. Because if we do get to an override number, then I think our job is to.
DLS, yeah.
I just think our job is to help people understand what the investment is, not just for the schools, but if we do an override, people will want to, I think, know what they're on the hook for to invest in the town. The schools, the ambulances, the fire department, the police and all that stuff.
Well, that's our job.
Yeah, exactly. So we're in agreement.
And I know that, you know, you all have done an amazing job of, you know, of presenting what these choices entail.
Yeah.
But just to clarify, if we vote the real needs budget on Monday, the budget that's presented includes that?
No.
Where we take the two, you don't take the 2.5 from other departments?
No. What is going to be presented to the selectmen is what has to be presented to them, which is a balanced budget. We voted it last night. The town manager recommended it and we held our nose and voted it last night because we have to, that's our job is to present a balanced budget.
I think what Katie's asking, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that we know the number for level funded plus 2 and 1/2 for all of our town departments. Regardless of what the school committee votes tonight, that number does not change. How that number is reached would need to be reconfigured if the school committee votes.
So you have, say you have, you know, $100 to spend, you have to decide how you're going to spend that $100. What the, our job is on finance is to say, $100 is all we have to give you, here's your $100. We don't, we don't have anything to do with how you spend it. So when, Monday, the selectmen will be presenting, it's the first, it's chapter one.
Yeah.
This is what a balanced budget looks like, and this is the amount of money that the schools would be allocated in a balanced budget. And then the work begins. And a police department, and each one of these departments, we can tell you who's getting, what's getting laid off, what's going to get cut, if, you know, if the hours are going to be less, if town hall's not going to be open as much, whatever the impact is, the same way that your team has done for you. But it's, I know, it's.
But regardless of what we vote on, a balanced budget is what's going to be presented to the select board on Monday.
Yeah, there has to be a ballot, a balanced budget.
If we vote for 8 and 1/2 percent, it still means to get to the balanced budget, we want 8 and 1/2 percent of it, so the other departments get less.
It would not, it would not mean that that would be the amount that's allocated to the budget.
But not if we don't get an override.
Exactly. But I'm not going to go to the town with hat in hand and say like, well, I kind of don't think we're going to have an override pass, so I'm going to vote for 2 and 1/2 percent.
No, 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 I don't think anybody, anybody is thinking that at all.
Yeah, I know, I know, and I'm not, I'm just clarifying it. So I just think it would be, I mean, I'll just say it a third time. To me, it'd be malpractice not to.
Katie, I think I understand. Monday, you, if you're voting for real needs, it is still going to be the, the balanced budget presented to the selectmen is still going to be the balanced budget number, the 2 and 1/2.
Betsy, I just want to clarify, because that is not my understanding based on a conversation, and an understanding of when the school committee votes a budget, we are voting a recommended number to the town that is then taken into consideration by the town manager.
We're not going to cut 2 and 1/2 million dollars out of all the other budgets for a balanced budget on Monday night. It's going to be the.
Okay, that was, that is. Contrary to information that we received. That we received. And so I think tonight, if we.
I mean, and if I'm wrong, forgive me, but it is not, it would be impossible to do that.
The purview of the committee is that we are voting and managing the fiscal budget of the district. And so when we make a recommendation, it doesn't, it can't be ignored.
There has been, no, of course, but there has been discrepancies for many, many years that the school committee will ask for a certain number and the recommended town manager's budget is something other than that. And then we work through those numbers until we, and make adjustments as we get closer to town meeting.
Make adjustments as we get closer to town meeting. So I guess what I'm, I'm not suggesting that the 2.5 gets cut tomorrow. But at the end of the day, a balanced budget would require, you know, that, that to be found.
Right. And the balanced budget, I mean, just to further complicate your lives, as we move to March, if something, if there's, if there's a change in some of the data that we fed in to come up with our revenue numbers, that number could change as well. But, for now, we are, this is a balanced budget that can be amended over the course of time until March. I know, it's, it's ridiculous. I, I, this is a bylaw that was written that 90 days before town meeting, we have to present a balanced budget to the selectmen. And that's what we're, that's the obligation that we're working on right now, the town manager has to do this.
So, it almost renders us irrelevant.
No, not at all. I think that your opinion matters greatly.
No, my opinion is wonderful.
No, your recommendation is, is, is completely valid, the selectmen then will understand what you want.
This is the first time I have gotten a call, or, or had a conversation the day, and I'm not, this has, this is no, it's a no-fault system, but this is the first time that I've ever been told, you, you can't vote. Pick a number. You have to vote level service, because you're only going to get level service unless there's an override.
I am not telling you not to vote.
Or you're pirating other departments.
I would never tell you not to vote, it's not my burden.
She's not saying we have to vote level service.
What she's saying is if we vote over it, it doesn't matter, because it's going in as level service.
Because it has to...
And if the select board or whomever, the finance committee decides that they want to meet our level service, we're taking a million from the police department and from DPW and from the fire department. That is not a good look for the town, for us.
So, no.
With the town.
The way it works is we have to present a balanced budget and the numbers, the town manager and the finance committee.
I understand that.
And then, when you get to town meeting, the only person that decides where the money goes is town meeting.
Is the voters, right. So, that's step two, that would be the override.
That would be the, the override, or...
If the, right.
God forbid, an amendment on the...
An amendment to the override.
Or amendment, no, amendment to the budget.
Amendment to the budget. I mean, to me, everything is advisory until you get to town meeting, and then someone can stand up and get a second and ask for more money.
From where?
Well, that's the point.
There's no more money?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, what department are we going to take it from?
Exactly right. Kelly, you've nailed it. And that would be the conversation, and it would be horrible.
I mean, we're...
In an override scenario, is what you're saying, right?
It's a terrible situation, yes, yeah.
Yeah. And that's where I think Ted, you know, I know it was like a, you know, sort of a from-the-hip remark, but, you know, he, I think he put it very bluntly, and to me, very plainly, we just have to do a good job of, of selling the value of an override.
Yeah. I think, and, and, I mean, this is, this is your line of work, we have to just educate the community. I believe firmly that this community will support the community services, education has always been a top priority.
Agreed.
And, we just have to make sure that they understand, and it's, it's, municipal finance is tricky, and we just have to make sure that they understand the implications of their vote at town meeting and their votes, and their vote at the ballot. But, for now, we're just satisfying our bylaw, and the finance committee and the town manager, our, the town manager has to present a balanced budget. And the finance committee held their nose and supported his budget last night.
And that's not in conflict with our mandate, which is to vote a sum of money that we believe is going to adequately support the schools.
Right, right. And by no mean, I did not indicate that your votes did not matter or were not impactful, they are absolutely impactful, but at the end of the day, it's just the, it's the town, it's town meeting, that's next.
No, tonight, tonight. I mean, for me, tonight, I mean, like, I may be sitting in an echo chamber, but like, I'm, I'm getting a...
There's just conflicting information being shared. I, I think that we have presented a very strong argument of why we need the Real Needs. However, I don't think tonight, by voting the Real Needs, is going to change the outcome in the coming months. I think that we need to have a vote tonight that is either on option one or option two of the reduction budget. And I don't think you should start picking apart cost centers, because if we start taking fractions of the cost centers off, that is going to confuse things. So, my recommendation is, absolutely, do I support the reduction budget? I don't support them whatsoever. I think that we are in a position right now where we have to make a decision about what our reduction budget will be, in case we don't have success with a contingency budget or override, whatever it's going to be called. With that, I think that we need to vote on that this evening, and then continue to advocate for our Real Needs outside of this meeting, because I don't think that decision is going to be made tonight. I think we've made very clear to the community, to the school committee, what implications will take place if we do not have additional funding infused into our current budget heading into FY '26.
I can't do it.
So, that's, that's the decision you have to make. So, I, I would suggest that someone make a motion to vote on one of the three budget scenarios, and from there, if we have to do three budget votes, so be it.
Okay. Everyone has to vote their, their, their understanding, based on the information that they've been given, and the information in front of them, and the context that's been provided. I'm going to make a motion that we approve the level-funded option-two budget for FY '26. It requires a second for discussion.
Second. Okay, and this one is 18?
No, 24.
Yeah, this is not charged.
Okay. Just remember, we are not voting on, yes, if that's, if that is how we want to identify the budget. The budget is based on the cost centers that we have in front of us, understanding what the offsets are in those, um, cost centers, and the final number. That's what we are voting.
Okay. And my understanding tonight about the bottom-line number is the number that we are essentially voting on. Cost centers are what the cost centers are by line, however, we will have the opportunity to move money around if it becomes available, um, in January, or, I guess, as we continue these discussions.
If additional funding becomes available to the school department, we would make a recommendation of where, what cost center that would go in.
Where that would be allocated.
We would not have the opportunity to move money within cost centers, and that we wouldn't have any information in January that would be different than what we have today, because right now, we're trying to get to what the recommendation is from the town about whether or not there's Article Five and an additional warrant article that would be a contingency budget. That would represent the Real Needs that all of the departments have presented.
Okay.
So, I'll be the first to go, and, and I'm not going to support this, because it is a hill that I will die on, trying to save as many teacher positions as I can. I just have to circle back. If we, so, we vote tonight, this goes Monday, this is what is presented, on a town meeting, the budget presented is a balanced budget, regardless of basically what we vote. So, if we vote for a Real Needs budget tonight, it doesn't get put into the balanced budget. The only time it comes into play is for an override. We're not taking money from other departments if we vote a Real Needs budget.
That's my understanding.
That's not my understanding.
Not my understanding either.
That is not my understanding.
I, I think that there would be adjustments that would be made up until March, but, but under, I cannot fathom that your Real Needs budget would be part of a balanced budget, because it would mean that $2 million, $2.5 million would then be taken from other departments. I don't, I don't see that as, as something that the finance committee could support. And he bring the budget.
Okay.
I am not speaking for the finance committee, but I'm just, if you're asking my opinion, that would not be something that I would see them...
Well, for what it's worth, I, I think this is a, it's going to be an arduous process that includes an override, and then education, and selling that override, and I think that I would, speaking for myself, I think we'd be getting off on the wrong foot by not amplifying the need that the superintendent has at least convinced me that we have. The budget is going to be balanced on Monday, the presented budget's going to be balanced on, but either way, whether we ask for it or not now. To make a statement now that I'm not, I'm speaking for myself, to make a statement now that I'm going for a, a level services budget to conform with the finance committee's process to select board, I think sends the wrong message to the community. This could be an echo chamber, but I've, I've heard vigorous opinion from, everyone that I've heard from is supporting Real Needs in the community. I've not heard one person, and maybe because it's, would be an unpopular statement, maybe I'm, maybe I'm not, you know, making myself visible to all the people that I should be, but I'm not hearing anyone saying that the Real Needs ask is unreasonable. So, I, I am not going to vote for a, a level services budget, I just think it sends the wrong message as a first step.
Okay. By call center.
The one I made a motion for was the level-funded option-two. I have a second. We're discussing it.
I, the universal kindergarten thing, I think you all know how I feel on that, but based on the discussions tonight, I don't think I can, I cannot support the option-two. I'm between option-one and the, and, you know, to Matt's comments, the real, Real Needs are the Real Needs, and that's, that is what we need, and, you know, our, our first real impression should be standing by that. However, we are a community and team players, and as Laurel and Betsy have articulated tonight, like, major efforts have been made as a town over the last several months with the sustainability task force and loads of other efforts that we've all been making. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to jeopardize all that good work to get where I also believe we are going to, you know, and it's on us to communicate and, and to open ourselves to the people who are not supporting Real Needs, right? Like, say, okay, come, let's talk, let's understand what your perspective is, and I, like you, I have not heard one nay to the Real Needs. Certainly, there's debate within the Real Needs, right, of how we spend that money, but for the purposes of chapter-one, I'm leaning towards option-one for tonight. But it's, it's not without a, you know, a lot of consternation, and, you know, Teresa, the, the excellent efforts that have been made in the special, special ed department, and we're working to reduce transportation costs, that's a huge item within our budget. And if, if we go back to level-funded, what you've told us about the transportation and all the efforts to try to lower those costs and also have fewer out-of-district participants, that, we need the Real Needs, we need the Real Needs, we have to have the Real Needs. But we're not, we're not voting on that tonight, that is, that is for March. So, I, I don't know, I don't know. But I, I, you know, Laurel, I, I feel so strongly about kindergarten, but I also feel there's a little bit more flexibility potentially if we have to pick one of those, or we decide to pick level-funded, it would be option-one, for me.
Okay.
I'm sorry, this is our meeting.
It's, it's a budget hearing, in theory, but...
Do you, Katie, did you have anything to say?
I just think there's a lot of misinformation, and so it's made this very convoluted and not, uh, what I thought that we were walking into. I, I, I think it comes back to the start of this meeting where we discussed the fact that, like, we don't have the money, like, and I, we can vote all day, I just, I'm hesitant to vote for something that would even remotely impact other departments in a significantly negative way. Obviously, the schools are our priority, and I would vote Real Needs all day, but I think I'm leaning towards what Kathy was just discussing, in that it's, it's chapter-one. If, if Real Needs is on the table come March, great. I just think that we have to vote with the information that I personally have, and it's that we don't have, I don't know, we don't have the funding for a Real Needs budget.
Okay. So, as was stated, I'm, I'm not an expert on Robert rules, Robert's rules, I, I do my best here. If, you know, I have put a motion on the table, we've discussed it, if we, if someone would like to amend the motion, it is well within their rights to do so, and so that would need to be done, if we're, if, if you want to change the motion that is on the table.
Or you could move to a vote...
Or we can vote it, right, and then just...
Then move to a different emotion.
But if you move to a vote, and the, the vote doesn't pass, I think...
We have a motion for that, and that was seconded for this particular vote.
Yeah.
So, we need to, to vote.
You can amend the motion.
We can amend it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm ready to vote. You would, you would literally take what she said for the motion and amend it. I, I propose that we, I, I move to amend the motion with the following changes.
Yeah. Sort of the only way we move to another discussion, which is completely fine, that's why we're doing this, so...
Well, it's not the only way, you could do the vote, and it could be, doesn't pass, we could do another motion.
Yeah, that's true. So, those are the two options on the table.
Okay.
So, I guess I move to amend the motion from level-funded option-two to level-funded option-one.
Second.
Open for discussion?
Yep. My understanding is we have to take a vote to accept the amendment, obviously, but I think it's, it should be in advance of the vote on the item that has been moved. Matt, is that correct?
I think, I think you want to do a...
It says, it says after proposing an amendment, there would be a debate on the proposed change.
Yeah.
And then a vote is taken on whether to accept the amendment, but this is a complicated vote, so I guess...
We should vote to accept the amendment, right? After we discuss the reason why you're making the amendment.
The reason why you're making the amendment.
Vote to accept the amendment?
No.
Oh.
We're deliberating.
You want to justify why you're making the amendment.
Oh.
You already said it, you don't have to say it.
You articulated that, I think, before you made the amendment, but...
Yeah. It, it did not sound like there was additional support at this time for option-two.
Okay.
Okay.
Does anyone want to speak to that amendment that was made, the motion that was made as an amendment? Before we take a vote on whether to accept that and then proceed? Nothing else? No? Okay, can I have a vote to accept the amendment as stated? Is it a roll call? Yeah. Is it all those in favor or a roll call? I am horrible at this.
You could only do a roll call.
Okay, roll call, Kelly. Aye. Laurel, aye?
Aye.
Katie?
Kathy?
Aye.
Aye.
Matt? It's been a fun last... Matt? It's been a fun lesson in Robert's rules. I hope everyone's learning a lot. Okay, so if we move through, again, my understanding of the vote of the budget, it's moving through by cost center, so I got to watch this finance committee last night, so I have a little bit better understanding of it. We vote each cost center and then we vote the total with a roll call, so.
And I'll just say something last night that was good, was saying hold if, like, instead of deliberating right then
If there's a question.
Just like, hold, so we get through the list to then draw anything back up then.
Yep.
Right.
You can hold on a cost center vote, discuss it, and then we move back and then vote the final number. So that would result in the inclusivity of all of the motions made in advance of that. Okay, I'm going to move forward. I'm just going to start the motions if the same person wants a second or call for a hold. Can I have a motion to approve the administration cost center at, where is my FY '26?
Now, that's the, I think you want to look at proposed.
Two over.
Proposed.
$1,771,995.
What is the request? Oh, because you don't have the offset, the offsets in between.
Yeah, yep.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong, I'm looking at the exhibit. Can we put the one that we're actually voting up so that it's crystal clear of also? It's up, sorry. Okay. You're way ahead of me. Option one, right?
Laurel, do you want to just take this? Because that way you can see that
Yes, I'm sorry, I just can't find the slide. Okay. Thank you, Danielle. Proposed FY '26 is what we are moving. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the administration cost center at $1,771,995?
So moved.
Okay. Does anybody want to ask any questions about that or discuss it? Ask for hold? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye? It's the same as real needs. I always know when I have to clarify something because Katie cannot keep the favor.
Well, then you can just decide not to vote the bottom line. Okay. So can I have a motion to approve curriculum and instruction at $34,259,95?
So moved.
I think you have to second. Somebody, sorry. I can just make the motion instead of asking for it, that's
Okay.
Anybody want to have a hold on that? No? Okay, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay. All those opposed? Sorry, I didn't get there. So that's four one. Can I have a motion to improve, approve, or I will, I move to approve other school services cost center at $4,367,870?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Stay in? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the operations and maintenance cost center at $3,75,248?
So moved. Second.
No, you're right. So moved, I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
I didn't say anything.
Four one.
Four one.
Can I have a motion to approve the fixed charges cost center at $35,000?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Great. Can I have a motion to approve the tuition programs cost center at $822,398?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
It's the same.
I know. I'm getting that. I'm getting, I'm getting the pattern.
You're jumping the gun on the opposed.
Can I have a motion to approve the total FY '26 operating budget allocation of $44,331,607?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Reluctantly, aye.
I wish, no pressure, I just don't want to cut
No, I know. I know.
All those opposed?
Nay.
The overall budget passes as discussed by cost center and proposed as a total amount of $44,331,607. Thank you, Danielle. Can I have a motion to adjourn unless there's anything else?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.